Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30. I will call the Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 meeting of Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. For flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern is excused, and Counselor Dahlbeck.
Here.
We have a court.
Item number four is approval of the minutes from the October 1st regular council meeting.
Motion by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Olson is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
We do have a request from Planning Director Cirque to move up items 11.1 through 11.3, which is under resolutions.
We have guests that may speak to these items. That's why we wanted to move these to the beginning. The motion, I believe, was by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Bender to amend the agenda is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.1 is a resolution, initial resolution introduced by the City of Superior relating to the issuance of taxable general obligation community development bonds in amount not to exceed $1,425,000 for a community development project, which is the TID number 15. We do have one person sign up to speak to this item also.
Before we consider the item, Mr. Peter Grote. I'm sorry, you said your name last time.
I think I got it right last time. [laughter] Hello. I'll speak rather quickly on this subject. It's not very complex, but if we're going to decide to pay this private company to build an apartment complex in our city, then can we at least get the budget in order so that we don't have to pay tens of thousands of extra dollars in interest sending out these bonds? It's not a very complex issue, so that's all I've got for you.
Thank you. Item 11.1, then, is up for your consideration, counselors. Motion by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Bender is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
11.2 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation community development bonds, Series 2019A of the City of Superior, Wisconsin.
Motion approved.
Seven.
The motions by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
11.3 is a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Superior approving the form of notice of assignment of leases or hellet dock company projects.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck, as motion was by, who made the motion? Counselor Elm made the motion, the second is by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. We are back in regular order.
Okay, we're back to item six, which is the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Bender is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Counselors, for item number seven, the Standing Committee recommendations for 7.1, the Finance Committee, we have a request to pull item two relating to the recommendation for the health insurance broker, and item number six relating to the hotel motel tax fund budget. But you'll notice this is also, we'll be discussing, and we'll be considering this again, under item eight, the Assistant Director Putz's recommendations. Is there objection to pulling these and considering them in tandem with item number eight so that we only have to discuss and vote on it once? Is there objection to that? Counselor Fennessy?
Pulling item? Pulling item two and item six for consideration down the road?
They're both already considered under item eight, so item number two is also item number 8.5, and item number six is also 8.4. So what I'm asking is to just consider them there.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. See no objection, we will pull those from item 7.1.
We do have someone sign up to speak to item number four also.
Mr. Grote, then, again.
Item number four of the Finance Committee is to approve moving forward with the proposal and sending to the administration and mayor to find funding not to exceed $18,000 for the fiber...
Fiber strategic plan.
Yeah, thank you.
So this is the concern that I actually was coming here to talk to you guys about. We're about to pay somebody $20,000, $192 per hour for a single work week to, in the words of his own document, champion this cause to our citizens. This, the cost of this, not listed specifically anywhere in his long document, roughly comes out to about $6 million for the previous city concerned. And every time that this comes up to vote after this, it's going to be just pushed on through because we're just moving one step ahead at a time. Let's not sink any cost into this. This is a luxury good that is not needed in this city. Nobody's died because they don't have high-speed internet. We don't need it. We don't need to spend $6 million or more on this project. We don't need another city utility. We have people in this city who are just getting by, and this will increase their taxes that they start to have to live paycheck to paycheck. Please, for God's sake, don't make another utility, and don't spend $192 an hour on this expert to champion the cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, then, you are considering item seven, the balance of item 7.1, the recommendations of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion, Counselor Fennessy?
Can we also pull item number three for discussion?
Yes, well, item number three, we consider separately the remaining balance of the Finance Committee items, further discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Item 7.1, item number three.
That is to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement by and between the City of Superior and Thomas Anderson for a term of three years through December 31st, 2022, with potential for additional renewals thereafter, subject to mutual agreement of terms and fees not to exceed $48,000.
What is your pleasure?
There's a motion by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender to approve.
Discussion, Counselor Fennessy?
I just had a question. In, in no way is my, is my question a slam at Thomas Anderson's. He's been an outstanding internal auditor. The work that he's done has been absolutely fantastic. The question I have is, this is basically what we're doing is three years now, and then it would be an annual renewal after that. If, can either, during that three-year period, can either parties terminate this?
Are you familiar with the contract?
I have not seen that contract.
I'm sorry, we can't answer your question.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because in a lot of municipalities our size, the internal auditing is done by the Finance Director. We're absent a Finance Director now, depending on who we hire, that new Finance Director may want to take on this, this role of internal auditor. So I guess if we, we've got until December 31st, I'll, I'll make a motion to refer this until the next meeting to, till we can get that answer.
The next council meeting?
Yeah.
I'll second.
The motion by Counselor Fennessy is second by Counselor Dahlbeck to table until the next Superior City Council meeting?
Yeah, thanks.
Discussion on the motion, table? See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Oh, we didn't, did we vote on the?
On the balance.
On the balance, okay, sorry. Item 8.1, I'm recommending approval of the miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Bender is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.2, I'm recommending approval of application by Appleby's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, 3605 Tower, to appoint Suprina Mackey as the agent for the remainder of the license period.
Motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender is their discussion. See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.3, Assistant Finance Director Putz is recommending approval of Amendment Four to the Professional Services Agreement with Design Elemental for an estimated cost of $35,750 funded through the Information Services Internal Service Fund.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Counselor Fennessy?
Can we, can we send this to the IT Committee? This is a, this is a renewal contract that, it's been kind of just on autopilot renewal. And in looking in the contract, there's kind of some weird language in there that Todd and I tried to get some, some clarification on, really what we're trying to accomplish by this contract. So I'd like the, the IT Committee to take a look at this from the lens of the IT Committee to find out how necessary this is, how much is necessary, how much is needed, and just kind of have it looking, taken a look at through the lens of the, the IT Committee. So I'll make a motion to refer this contract to the IT Committee.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Olson to refer to the Communication and Information Technology Committee. Is there discussion? See none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, Assistant Finance Director Putz is recommending approval of the 2020 Hotel Motel Tax Fund Budget, and to delegate the $13,000 previously designated for winter kickoff festivities to be designated for a winter festival, as recommended by the Finance Committee at their October 10th meeting.
Is there a second considering the budget?
Second.
This is a motion by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Sweeney. Is there discussion? Counselor Fennessy?
Can I ask what the reason for this is? We're, we're basically slashing the, it in half. Last year we did $30,000 to put on this event, which I think was a, we can all agree it was a success. And then here we are, right as the snow's about to fly, making a decision to cut that in half. So I guess I'm just curious, why? Have we gotten to a point where we're so efficient in planning this that it's just going to cost $13,000 less, or $16,000 less? Or are we shaving the, are we making this a shell of what it, what it was last year?
The best I can answer your question, there's a, the previous year's budget was, I believe, $40,000. And so when we considered this budget, Director Cadot asked us to consider this on a little bit more expedited schedule, largely to get some direction around, I believe, this festival, among some other things than here. There were also a couple more changes within this budget that, that needed some updating. It, it had just been the same budget approved generally year over year. So we made a couple other changes, re-designating some things, but specifically around the Winter ICE Festival, we expect some changes within the festival itself, the, I believe, and Director Cadot, please correct me if I get any of this wrong, but we don't expect to have the slide anymore, which will cost, which will reduce the amount of staff time we need to put in. There's a possibility the festival could be reduced by the lack of pond hockey as well. And so if the festival is going to be significantly reduced, what I am suggesting is that we invest more in a festival that's growing, which is the tree lighting ceremony, which kicks off Small Business Saturday now, which we, of course, will not be able to do until the holiday season of 2020. But also, this money, if, as the Finance Committee recommended, we switch to just calling it a winter festival, and we can direct it either way, we'd still be able to support a festival in January if private entities were putting it on. So it just struck me as an outsized amount of money to put on a festival. It would be, I believe, the largest amount of money we spend on any one festival, and the largest expenditure within this individual budget. But my overall purpose was just to get this budget in balance. It has not been balanced for several years now, and so I just, I guess fundamentally don't believe we should be creating a budget in deficit. Obviously, we do have a reserve there, but that reserve has proven useful in the last couple of years as items have come up sporadically throughout the year. So I submitted a balanced budget, and I guess that is my recommendation. Anything to add to that, Director Cadot?
But you didn't submit a balanced budget because it still has a surplus in it. So if you were trying to eliminate the surplus, you didn't accomplish that.
I'm not trying to eliminate the surplus, I'm trying to have expenses match revenues, which is what this does.
It doesn't.
Director Putz, am I wrong on this? Does this not do expenses not match revenues here?
Well, yeah, the 2020 expenses would be matching the 2020 revenues.
But there's still a significant surplus, almost to the tune of $60,000 in this fund.
Yes, if we pass a balanced budget this year, I'm actually looking at, if we don't, if we keep expenses at the same as revenues, this projects $75,752 in reserve. So that amount, though, has decreased.
Say that number again?
$75,752.
Right.
So that amount has been decreasing year over year. So the original proposed, if we would have kept the same as last year's budget, we would have, that would have been, I think, around neighbor of $127,000. So that $75,000 would have taken another $17,000 decrease. Obviously, it would have left a reserve at the end of this year as well, but that reserve's been decreasing every year.
The, a couple things to that. The, the surplus is decreasing, it should be. This, this fund is funded by the hotel motel tax. There's no reason we should have a surplus at the end of the year. We should be pouring that money into different events to try and fill the hotels, try and put, you know, put heads in beds, if you will. There's, there's no reason this fund should have a surplus. So when we have an event like this with a surplus, I don't see a reason why, why we wouldn't, especially because it's a growing festival. At some point, the idea would probably be to hand this off to another organization to, to take and run with it. That time isn't the middle of October. The time to have those conversations with another nonprofit to take over this enormous festival probably should have been three, four, five months ago, not, not right now when it's about to snow, and when the planning should have already been started, and when the TDF application should have already been in. So the time to, to cut this isn't at the 11th hour, and then we're, we're left with no festival for the, for the community. This is, this is what, what we talked about doing with the ICE Festival, is we'll, we'll give it some, we'll pour some money, some resources into it, we'll build it up, and now at, at the time when it's at its peak, we're just going to cut the money out? I, I don't think this makes any sense unless you're, unless you just want to see it fail. And if, if you want to see it fail, let's just put $13,000 into it. But if we want to continue to see this grow to a point where we can hand it off to a nonprofit or some other organization, we need to fully fund this.
Just a couple of clarifying points, and at the risk of splitting hairs, this budget does not have a surplus. This budget has a reserve because in previous years, we spent less than we took in. For the past several years, we have spent more than we've taken in. This, the end of this year, we will add nothing to the reserve if this budget is approved. If we fully fund the ICE Festival in the same way as last year, we will spend more than we take in and reduce that reserve. That reserve, again, has been used by this council to take on new events or one-time, one-time expenses when there's an opportunity that comes up throughout the year. So there is advantage in maintaining a reserve. That is why I recommended not decreasing that reserve this year. And I can't speak to the overall tradition of the ICE Festival. I don't recall ever setting any kind of vision or approving that. That, of course, is for the council to decide what you want to do with that festival, except I do want to say that with planning, this is not the 11th hour. It is late in the year, which is why we moved this up ahead. This is the earliest that we have ever submitted this budget.
So how much, how much did we fund the ICE Festival last year from the hotel motel fund?
$40,000.
I'll make a motion to amend item 8.4, strike out $13,000 and put in $40,000.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Sutherland to amend, to amend the motion. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Is there discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Sutherland.
I just want to thank Counselor Fennessy for, you pretty much said everything I wanted to say, to be honest with you. But when it comes to community events like this, it doesn't make sense to go gunhole for three or four years and then pump the brakes on it. And I understand that one day someone's going to have to step up and take this over. But if that's the case, we should, we should set that example right now for the following years, after 2020. To, to, to cut the funds on that, on that event would really be detrimental to it. To say that pond hockey has pulled back from this is false. They're voting tomorrow, and with an approval of this kind of a budget, it would really give, I think their board, a kick in the butt to keep this going over there at that location. Not only that, it's, it's something I would never be able to vote in support of cutting that fund over, in half, at least in half, or more than that. So I'd hope that the rest of this council would continue on giving direction to, the department has to move forward with this, and maybe in the future, someone could take this over. But for right now, I think, as Counselor Fennessy said, the 11th hour, well, if each month was an hour, it would be the 10th hour. So we're right there. It's, it's not good to cut this right now. I think it would be a big culture shock to everybody. So I'm asking everyone to support this at $40,000. Thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Just for clarification, then, we would be reducing the reserve?
We would expect to reduce the reserve, yes, by $27,000 by the end of the year.
And then what is the balance of the reserve?
Roughly $48,000, do you have that?
That's correct, $48,000.
It would be $48,000?
At the end of 2020, yes. Counselor Sutherland.
I failed to mention that, and you know what? You did bring up some good points, Mayor Payne, and we did talk and email, but we have some, we have some big one-time fees coming out of this in the reserve for 2020, not all the reserves, but all this fund. For example, the sponsorship over there for the, what was that called? Was it that $15,000 sponsorship on Duluth for the video fest? Catalyst, I'm sorry. That was a one-time deal. Plus, we got extra at $9,000. We don't know the future of anything, so that, you know, at least we have $15,000 that's not a reoccurring expense. So to say that we're slashing this fund, it could really easily build back up. And for us, city, not to spend money on trying to promote tourism back into our town, would be selfish of us not to use that money for that. Thank you.
Counselor Elm.
So if we move forward with this, will the intent be to switch it over to maybe a more of a privately funded or sponsored event next year? Or what is, what is the plan going forward next year, I guess?
Director Cadot, do you have a plan?
Well, I think that's a good question. And, you know, oftentimes, the Finance Committee has asked me to do a recap of the festival. So we have talked about it earlier in the year, with changing of the guards, so to speak. That report was, was never done, and therefore, nothing was specifically mentioned about this year's event. I'd say personally, I think it's a slippery slope when we start to fundraise against our nonprofit partners in town who organize and promote and do a lot of different activities, including organize festivals and events. But if you say that it is not going to be funded out of the hotel motel tax next year, and that for 2021, and that is the intent of the council to seek other opportunities, then whether that is partnering with organizations to do that, or whether it's the charge of the Parks Recon Forestry Director to fundraise for a festival for the community, that's the direction that I'd be looking for.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Sweeney?
I need a clarification. If the pond hockey is, aren't they moving or concerned, considering moving to Westman Arena? Is that, so the pond hockey probably will not be there?
I don't know the answer to that. Counselor Sutherland just said they're voting tomorrow on that decision.
If may I?
I'm not suggesting that...
Counselor Sutherland, can you shed more light on that?
Yeah, that's what I talked to, before I came here, talked to the MIRA, that's the dirt bike racing on the ice out there that brought in 500 people last year. They're still moving forward with it. That was one of the biggest events. And they're voting tomorrow on the committee at the board, that we're all welcome to attend and voice our, hopefully we can ask them to keep supporting it at Barker's Island.
What, okay, so that's, we don't know if the pond hockey's going to be on the pond or it's going to be at Westman Arena, right? Okay. How about the slide? Is that, as of now, the sponsorship is gone on that, is that fair to say?
Director Cadot?
I can answer, I text, I got a message from Brian Rager, who, as you know, is the president of Saha, and he said that the city's decision is only a small part of Saha's decision, that they plan to do something that same weekend, but they plan to host it in a different location. Counselor Sutherland's absolutely right that they're planning to vote on it tomorrow, but the cost, the time, the unpredictability of the weather, they lost their food sponsors, the number of volunteers, their lower registration numbers for pond hockey are a few of the reasons that they're looking at making it a much easier three-on-three tournament, but still having it that same weekend, and they would still be very interested in partnering, whatever that might look like, because they're still going to do an event that weekend. In regards to the snow slide, UPI helped to build the snow slide. So city trucks hauled snow for about two weeks, roughly $12,000 of staff time to help provide the snow, and then UPI volunteered to actually help build it. UPI is no longer sponsoring to help build it this year. So if you tell me spend part of that $40,000 and make it happen, we'll use city equipment and labor, and we can still have that.
So the two items, the pond hockey and the slide, at least the sponsorship or the activity of the pond hockey is not going to be on Barker's Island. Is that fair to say?
Although they're formally voting on it tomorrow, that is what I have been told.
So what other events are there, then? Those are the two, would those be the, the two major events during that weekend?
I think that pond hockey brings in quite a few people. Last, the, their registration numbers have been decreasing over the years. Two years ago, MIRA was not able to have their ice racing because of the ice conditions. So there, that, but last year, they had one of the biggest attendance numbers by being there. So they plan to be there. We've got a couple new partners that have reached out and wanting to do different activities. They want to do a COOB tournament. Last year, the curling was, they were excited about that and would like to continue. So I think there, with the, the current direction of moving forward with a festival, it'll change its formation, but there are certainly different ideas that could be generated to fill in some of those gaps.
Counselor Fennessy?
We throw in a couple different, quite a few different scenarios. What if this organization doesn't do it? What if that organization, you know, this, that? The fact is, let's look at the worst-case scenario. Let's say pond hockey pulls out, let's say the, the slide isn't built, let's say MIRA doesn't do it, and then we're sitting here with $13,000. What can we do with that? Absolutely nothing. But let's say they all pull out, we still have $40,000 to do something with. We could still do the ice sculptures, we can still do the, the fireworks, we can still do, you know, quite a bit. We can still put on some kind of a festival. So, but what this does is by, by the city saying, yes, we're still, we're still vested in this event, we're still interested in this event, we're still behind this event, gives a lot more of an encouragement for these other organizations to bolt on to this event and to make it what it was last year. But by us cowering and saying, we're only going to give $13,000, you know, good luck, hopefully, hopefully we can piecemeal an event together, I, I think is, is terrible, and it's terrible timing, and we need to do this.
Counselor Fennessy?
Thanks. I, I don't know a lot about this festival, it's not one that I go to, so I have some things to learn as well, but based on Director Cadot's description, I'm not hearing anything that indicates growth. But I, I can understand the need to want to stay on board and keep it afloat. $40,000 for the party is substantial, but what I'm asking is who else exactly contributes financially, and in what, and in what configuration does that look like? And, and how does this decision impact your role and your capacity in parks?
Um, financial contributors in the past, uh, the, the TDF has given marketing dollars towards it, twenty-five, twenty, and then fifteen thousand over the three years. Um, there are a, a significant amount of, excuse me, um, business contributions and financial or time contributions to it. Um, we had twelve different businesses sponsor ice carving, so that was like, you know, that was a neutral because they were paying for, uh, what they received, and there was no income per se. Um, Embridge did sponsor it, uh, as well for a couple of years at the five thousand dollar level. And other than that, no other additional sponsors were sought because all of those partners, um, MIRA and Pond Hockey in particular, look for sponsorships to hold their event. So that would be me competing with their, for their sponsorship dollars for the event. And, um, your next question in regards to how would that affect, you know, when you're pulling, pulling trucks to haul snow and you're pulling people to set up, uh, different events, something else gives. So, you know, whether it's the ice rinks not being cleared for a couple extra days or other things not happening, you know, it all kind of is a give and take. So we can, we, you always seem to squeeze it in there, but then something else isn't happening as a result.
The motion is to amend. Uh, is there further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. The, uh, motion as amended is to approve the whole budget. Uh, is there further discussion on the budget? Hotel motel tax budget? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item eight point five is a recommendation to approve, to, approval to award the health insurance broker agreement to Marsh McLellan Agency for seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid out of Fund Eight Seventeen Self-Inured Health Fund, as recommended by the Finance Committee at their October tenth meeting.
Counselor Fennessy.
Could the minutes reflect that I'm going to recuse myself, uh, for a potential conflict of interest?
They shall so reflect. What then is your pleasure, counselors? The motion to approve is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elm. Discussion. See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, Chief Alexander, got to let him in.
Item eight point six, Environmental Services Director Roberts is recommending approval to award lift station, seven force main replacement project to Stack Brothers Mechanical Contractors Inc. in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion is by Counselor Olson, second by Counselor Fennessy. Counselor Sweeney.
I didn't look at, do we, did we have another bid on that?
Yeah, there were, uh, there were three bids on that. Stack Brothers, KTM Paving, and A1 Excavating all bid it. And, uh, um, Stack Brothers was the little bid.
See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Eight point seven, Fire Chief Gordon is recommending approval to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus and supporting equipment from Five Alarm Fire and Safety in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents with partial funding come, uh, funding from the FEMA grant.
The motion is by Counselor Sutherland, second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Eight point eight, Public Works Director Janico is recommending approval to award the East Third Street Culvert Rehabilitation to TNT Aggregates LLC in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents.
The motion is by Counselor Dobek, second by Counselor Olson. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Eight point nine, Director Janico is recommending approval to award the Moccasin Mike Road Culvert Replacements to Northern Interstate Construction Inc. in the amount of nine hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
The motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, second by Counselor Dobek. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item nine point one, the mayor is submitting the preliminary 2020 capital improvement budget.
So counselors, uh, I don't have anything for you to vote on here tonight. Uh, I hope by now you've been able to see our most recent draft of the CIP. If you look at it closely, it's a fairly bleak document. Uh, the, the last draft I saw showed a deficit of five, seven-year deficit of around ten million dollars, uh, which will obviously be very difficult to balance. Uh, why I wanted you to see that now is, uh, very shortly, I will be calling you to, uh, what amounts to a special meeting or a committee, the whole meeting, to do effectively a priority-setting session on projects within the CIP. So I wanted to prepare you for that in advance, as well as give you an opportunity to ask questions about the CIP as it currently stands. All we have done to it is update projected revenues. And the way we came to that is to take the estimated 2019 terminal tax allocation and then presume, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Putz, was it no growth or two percent growth?
Um, no growth for next year, and then two percent thereafter.
Uh, that is obviously a very bleak projection, a very conservative one. But if that were the case, it would, and we attempted to fund absolutely everything that exists in the CIP right now with no new bonding, it would, and to do so within five years would create a, a ten million dollar deficit. So if, if you were listening carefully just there, I gave you a few possible options for what we can do. Obviously, we will need to look at cuts in actual projects, uh, either eliminations or reductions. Uh, we will need to consider things, uh, like new bonding. Uh, potentially, this is the most radical proposal, altering the projected terminal tax allocations in future years. You can balance the books by making up any number you want. I can't say I recommend doing that, but, uh, and finally, uh, uh, changing the way the CIP works by extending it further into the future. That allows us to capture more revenue by projecting to be more conservative into the future while accomplishing, uh, a lot of the more recent projects. Uh, but there's, I, I just want to be clear, there is no solution that will be an easy decision for you. So, uh, do you have questions for myself or the Assistant Finance Director right now? I hope to have that meeting, uh, within the first two weeks of November. Is that what we said?
November twelfth.
We said it already?
I think, yeah.
Okay. November twelfth, it sounds like.
Um, item nine point two is the amended agenda. The mayor is submitting the 2020 general fund budget approval and requesting a public hearing for November fifth.
The motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Van Sickle, or I'm sorry, by Counselor Bender to appro-
Ludwig.
Ludwig. Counselor Ludwig made the second to approve the budget and set the public hearing. Counselor Olson.
Um, just a couple of questions here. In the, uh, the notes under levy section B adjusted, assume by majority of vote at sixty-three thousand, is that in here?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time, please?
In the, under the notes, under section B, is that in the budget down below under the tax levy? Is that sixty-three thousand added in?
Section B.
Uh, you've got a...
Counselor, would you be able to bring that up here? Let me check. Yes, yeah. So, uh, in the notes, Counselor Olson notes a levy adjustment of sixty-three thousand dollars. That is already, it's at the very top of the CIP sheet. Uh, that is already built into, uh, the tax levy, yes.
So that has to be... Majority, is that, uh...
Well, the, the whole budget requires a majority vote anyways, so we, we would be approving that, yes.
Okay.
That, uh, I, I believe that might be an old note from Jean's, and I think the reason that exists, one of the things we considered in this budget, you'll remember that we lowered the tax levy last year. That meant that state statute allows us to exceed usual levy limits the following year after you've reduced taxes. You can vote, you can go back and recapture some of the money that you reduced the previous year. I know that sounds a little confusing. Uh, but to do so would require seven votes by the council to recapture that. We are not proposing that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if this is from Jean or who. This is the same document I questioned, the workers' comp, and I'm assuming that that is taken care of now. That's in here?
Um, yes, we have updated numbers in there. They, um, fit well within our budget, so, yep, no, no adjustment needed.
And also, then, the health insurance rates are included with what we approve tonight?
Um, well, I believe the, the health insurance is still a, a budget that needs to go through, and obviously, with our broker change, you know, we could see changes to that, but we won't know that for a while.
The health insurance liability fund budget still needs to be approved, but are you asking about the health insurance rates?
So how, how are we going to approve the budget if we don't have that information yet?
The health insurance rates are always an estimate. We are just, like many of the expenses in the budget, we just have to estimate what we expect it to be. So we are setting the amount that we will transfer to the liability fund in the hopes that, in what we expect it to be, uh, enough to cover all of our health insurance liabilities this year.
And that, is that the three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in, in the liability insurance fund?
Through.
He's talking about the, the transfers to other funds. No, I, I think that's a different fund. The, um, health insurance rates would be embedded within each department, um, you know, uh, within the, um, right, in the benefits.
So I got one of you is telling me it's a liability insurance fund, and the other one telling me it's not.
No, it, it is a transfer to the health insurance liability fund, but it is budgeted to each individual department. So Public Works will transfer a certain amount for each employee to the health insurance liability fund.
Good.
Is that, are we on the same page?
I think so, yeah.
That's all I got.
Further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
On eleven point four is a resolution in support of the Nemetschek Trail Energy Center.
Okay. Uh, sorry, we'll just get it on, on the floor. Who made the motion? Counselor Sutherland made the motion. Who made the second? Counselor Elm made the second. Kyle Bukovich is here to speak. Mr. Bukovich. Just a reminder, sir, that you have three minutes to speak.
Sounds good. Good evening. Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Kyle Bukovich, President of the Northern Wisconsin Building and Construction Trades Council. Tonight, I'm asking for the council's support for the Nemetschek Trail Energy Center. This project will create up to two hundred and sixty family-supporting construction jobs at peak, peak construction, which is expected to take three years to complete. Once the facility is operational, there will be an estimated twenty-five full-time positions, as well as up to a hundred and fifty indirect jobs created. I am pleased to announce that Minnesota Power has committed to using local union labor and contractors. The members of the Northern Wisconsin Building and Construction Trades Council are the highest quality, safest, and skilled workforce around. They are also the residents of Superior and the surrounding communities. The Nemetschek Trail Energy Center is a crucial stepping stone in reducing carbon emissions while producing a reliable power source when the wind isn't blowing or the sun isn't shining. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
We have a motion, a second. Discussion. Counselor Olson.
I would actually like to amend this resolution. There's a couple of changes in there that was brought to my attention. Um, so the amendment, I don't know if you guys got it in front of you or not.
I'm ready.
Like it, but, um, in the fourth whereas, the current resolution put forward said, whereas the project will create two hundred and sixty family-sustaining jobs during peak construction and will support a hundred and seventy-five jobs when fully operational. I'd like to amend that to twenty-five, as those would be the twenty-five full-time jobs in the plant itself.
Amend two sixty to twenty-five?
Yes.
Two sixty?
No, no, one seventy-five jobs to twenty-five. The other hundred and fifty Kyle touched on, their ancillary services, vendors, stuff like that. So the one seventy-five to twenty-five. And then in the, uh, the whereas, the city of Superior and Douglas County will share over two million annually in increased revenue. I'd like to amend that to one million. That was a typo that we just plain kind of missed, so.
Uh, if it matters...
A million-dollar miss, but...
If it matters to you, counselor, I'm almost positive it's one point two.
Pardon me?
I'm almost positive it's one point two.
What we want to go by is what the information that INTEC actually sent, sent out, so that's what we'd like to see.
The motion then is to amend the number one hundred and seventy-five to twenty-five jobs when fully operational, and to amend the number two million annually to one million annually. Is there a second?
We'll share over one million.
We'll share over one million, yes. Sorry, who made the second? Counselor Van Sickle made the second. Uh, is there a discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please signify, I'm sorry, Counsel Sweeney. You wish to discuss the amendment?
Dan, are you saying, just for clarification, that the full-time employees at, after it gets operational will be what?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five full-time employees.
Total?
Yes. Plant employees.
Oh, plant employees.
Plant employees, yes.
It's a different, it's a different, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Can we add that word then?
That's in there.
Oh, plant employees. So what is the total?
Well, the total is the one seventy-five.
The total is one seventy-five?
No, 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 no.
The amendment, uh, will cause that paragraph to read, whereas the project will create two hundred and sixty family-sustaining jobs during peak construction and will support twenty-five jobs when fully operational.
So they're operational jobs within the plant. They will be plant employees. The one seventy-five that you got, Jack, was a number that we got from Minnesota Power, and what that included was vendors, some of the suppliers, and Kyle, you talked to Eric Forsman. Can you touch a little bit further on it than that?
Yeah, it was mostly just vendors, um, any contractors that had to go in there for regular maintenance.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.